Seven o'clock, so welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, September 22. Please all rise for the buzzer.
I apply the patience to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Excited on the agenda for selectwoman's updates. I think just to highlight today, we were lucky, fortunate to have our groundbreaking for the Emergency Operations Center. And so that was nice Congressman Joe Courtney came to help us kick off the event. The project is moving along and hopefully will be done with less than 12 months. So we're hoping to see that project finished, but they're going to start doing a lot more work at the site. And it was great to see Congressman Courtney there. I was telling the story about how he called me from the House floor, December 23rd, when I was buying my Christmas roast that we had gotten this grant. So it was a couple of years ago and how exciting it was to get the news of that because it was really the only way we could move this project forward. So excited to have that happen. I think at the last meeting, I talked a bit more about the school renewal plan opened with the new elementary school. I know there's been some hiccups of traffic and we're working through all that, but everything went really well with that school. So excited to see the new buildings seem to be functioning and no complaints so far. So Dr. Kev probably got most of us, but anyway, so that's it for my report. Any updates from other board members?
I went to the first Madison City Valley Services meeting. It was perfectly attended. I think we had everybody there, which was his first meeting of the year. So but Scott went through kind of the board and commission charter in charge and kind of walked through all the, you know, the changes that they came up with and they ratified it inside the group. And then he said, walk through what they're focused on for the year in terms of programming for all the members as well. So it's actually a really good meeting and the new members seemed fantastic. So really excited to get that going. Then obviously Pride Fest was last weekend, so it was very, very well attended, dialed up some great weather, 70, 40 degrees and sunny. So it was, it was great.
It's been a great week.
And a huge shout out to our town folks that did the, the walkway. They, they did a really nice job. That looked great.
Yeah, I think that we, we started this last year. We're kind of rotating. It's simple. It's not permanent. It's, you know, painting can be taken and so we'll do like red, white and blue. And we're talking about maybe we do like holiday seasonal color too, or we do black and orange. And it's just kind of a fun thing. We've got a lot of positive feedback for people.
They really did a great job.
It was great.
Yeah.
All right. A few updates from our Senior Services Commission. October will be their last meeting of 2025 and they will resume their in-person meetings after daylight savings time starts in March. So it's probably going to be like March 10th. That's just so that folks don't have to be driving when it's dark out. That was a preference there and they do have a lot of great activities going on. A senior center is very active. So anybody that's interested, I highly recommend that you check out the newsletter. They have that online. And then let's see here, rent rebate. If anybody is wondering if they're eligible for that, the end of the month, September 30th is the deadline for that program.
Two quick things. First, a giant shout out to Madison Beach Hotel. The proceeds from the Grass East Strip concerts, which they donate 100% of those proceeds to the Madison Ambulance Association. A record year, over $20,000 was donated to the Ambulance Association. This is not new. They've been doing this for a while, but I think it's, it's worthy that one of the best hotels in New England is also very active in the community and giving back. So kudos to them. Thank you very much. The other one, I just want to talk really quickly about an article that was in the source. It was the Schools Capital Plan and a summary of what's in there. A few people noticed the roof from Daniel Hand, which has been a project long discussed and needed, but also putting it together with a recent replacement of the air conditioning units. And there was concern that the work to put the new air conditioners on the roof was then going to have to be undone to put the new roof on. And in fact, that is not the case. When the new units went on, it was with an eye towards the replacement of the roof. And the units won't have to be disturbed, moved or otherwise touched in order for the entire roof to be replaced. So I don't want anybody to think that we are doing the equivalent of ripping solar panels off the roof to put a new roof on or anything like that. These were all done according to a plan and, and that plan has been to optimize the, the building and the cost to renovate the building. So rest assured.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you. There's enough of the comments. We'll go to citizens comments. We have some attendees. I know you're here for the EDC discussion. Any comments from citizens? Raise your hand. Say your name, address.
My name is Bruce Swartkert. I live on Indigo Trail in Madison. Albert Einstein once said that the way you find vanity is doing the same thing over and over again. I think you're going to have a different outcome. I was a little dismayed to look to reading the source on this ongoing Academy Street. Whatever it is, the boil on Madison's backside. We talk about the pledge of allegiance as a republic and of course we all vote. And vote with what? 70% to get rid of this building. Why are we spending another penny after what? 15 years, 20 years to revisit what? We visited the site once and thought about senior citizen housing. That was shot down because the building has asbestos. It's way beyond rehab. I mean, it would cost 15, 20 million dollars at least to rehab the building into senior citizen center. So I have another alternative. We have, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the colonial house that sits to the right of the Indian Heights. Right. It's been there since 1705 or something, which is a beautiful site. And to the left of the Academy Street, we have our former Town Hall, which is a beautiful 1920s building. And then of course we have the Academy Street School and we have Academy Street right there. We don't have a town green because we use the church, I believe, owns the whole green that we all think is our town green. But reality, it doesn't belong to the town. It belongs to the church. And I'm assuming the church has a say so of what occurs on their property. So to have an annual flower show or a, an annual tax sale, they have to say, well, first we'll get our okay. So if we bite the bullet and take down a decrepit old building and level it and then actually close Academy Street and put together the Colonial House, a beautiful green. It could, we could turn it into a, a flower display that people come once a year to see Madison's Flower Show. And we have the Old Town Hall there for any kind of meetings that people would like to have on any kind of subject. And actually create a center of Madison that belongs to all of the people, not, not just, I'm, I'm all in favor of senior citizen housing. And that leads me to the, the second thing. I, I think we okay senior citizens tax relief. Am I correct with that? And the first go around, we said, okay, either you'll get a reduction in your taxes or you won't have to pay any taxes. But when you leave Madison and you sell your house, which would be anywhere from 500 to $800,000. I mean, the raised ranch is going for 600,000. Then you should pay us back the taxes that we held off. But then the town passed another resolution that said, well, don't worry about it. You don't have to pay it back. This, this, this kind of blows my mind for two reasons. One, somebody is making five or 600,000. That's either the estate or their children. Meanwhile, the rest of us are subsidizing housing for seniors with a very good intention of trying to keep seniors in their housing. I'm all for that. People lived in this town, I don't care how many years, but, and as, as we get older, we're paying doctors or we're paying the vet bills for $500 to bring the dog and cat into the, the hospital. But it seems to me that if we give something to someone to help them to remain in their, in their house instead of going to a nursing home or something, and then that house does sell for a huge amount of money. Well, then the rest of us taxpayers are actually subsidizing people and their estates. We're not subsidizing the people. We're subsidizing the money that's going to go to their heirs. And I, I wish the town would revisit that and say, it's okay to help seniors stay in their homes. But it's not okay to the rest of us that we're subsidizing their estate. It's almost like when I get my electric bill now, the summer, I pay $220 a month for people I don't even know. And I don't know where that is in the constitution of the United States, but we got a little version of that going on in the town. But to get back to the, to the Academy Street School, what's going on? 70% of this, of the people said, no, get rid of it. Now you're, now you're bringing consultants back.
I understand. We've had an opportunity to provide a public comment. We usually don't do responses here.
Oh, so what, what do we do? I just talk and make it sound nothing?
It's a comment.
Oh, so you write it down and then you talk about?
If you want to submit it in writing, I'm happy to respond. I mean, there's been a lot of public conversation about why we're doing this process. I also remember the editor explaining that.
Yeah, I read that. So that's, that's, you know, that's, that's just the same. No, that's, that's just the same. All around, we voted to get rid of the building, Peggy. Then do it. Don't you represent us?
Obviously you did not read clearly what was on the ballot because that's not what the vote was.
It should be done, Peggy. It should be done. We voted to get rid of it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Okay.
Do it.
Share your comment.
Is it a republic or is it a dictatorship, Peggy? Do you run this town? Is it a dictatorship or do we vote?
We need to move on. We need to move on.
Okay. All right. And 20 years of preparing for an empty building. 20 years. Thank you for your comment.
Yes, Peggy. Comment. We'd like to now see if there's any hands raised to people online. Okay. Jeannie, do we have anybody online who'd like to make a public comment?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Consent Agenda. And I'd like to make a motion to approve amended consent agenda that includes item number six E, approval to accept a grant award of $14,918.30 from the Secretary of State to assist in the implementation of early voting. Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda with the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to item number seven, which is an update from our Economic Development Commission regarding strategic goals of town resources. And we'll talk a little bit that we have the Chair of our commission here, Andrew Wood, as well as one of the members of the EDC. And we'll also talk a little bit about the charge of the commission. So I know you guys have had some conversations, right, about some of what your goals and objectives are. And one of the discussions has been about resources, right, to assist them as a commission. We had somebody in that position for about a year and a half, two years. It was funded through ARPA funds. And we shared that person. They were a part-time employee of Madison. They're an employee of Guilford. So unfortunately, just due to circumstances, they moved on. We opted not to move forward with any permanent funding for the position at that time. So wanted to talk with the board because I think, and it'd be helpful to get feedback from the commission, a little bit more about, you know, what you want to accomplish and then how, you know, having somebody that's more professional in that role might help you assist and achieve your goals, objectives. So I thought it'd be important to talk about that because as we go into the budgeting season, I think the question becomes, do we want to look and add that resource back into the town budget? And remember early on, that was a role that had been shared by our town planner, who also had the role of economic director of economic development. And, and then that kind of transitioned, there was kind of a reorganization of that department and then we moved with this part-time role. So, so I know Bruce, you're the liaison for that. And I think there's been a lot of conversation at meetings about the role of the EDC and resources and so maybe opening up for discussion.
Yeah. So I think I, I would first like to put this in context. When we changed the charter, we changed the formatting of the permanent commissions and we adopted a, a consistent layout to the charges. And so this is the, the commissions moving their old mission statement over into the new format, correct? And then we then further invited the commissions variously to reimagine what they think they should be doing and bring those thoughts back to us. So that's what this represents. A lot of this is either verbatim or a, an updated version of the mission, language that's already on the website. And then there are some new thoughts in there as well. So maybe we start with the new thoughts?
Yeah. Why don't we start where you want to start? Why don't we start where you want to start?
Well, I, I think Peggy's summarized it correctly. To undertake economic development, you need information and you need data to interpret that data and then to make recommendations based on that data. With no resources allocated within the town to that, there is then no ability to collate the data. So for example, we don't actually know who the largest employer is in town. We can take a guess, but we don't actually know. We certainly don't know who the top 20 employers are in town. We spent some time over the summer with an intern trying to pull together the list, but it, you go through all the various forms of data that you, sewage in the downtown. What sewage capacity is the layer and what could you use it for? Because there's a clash between what uses would we like in town and what uses can we have in town? And they may not meet and therefore, again, our ability to draw that together and offer guidance is very limited. If we had those resources, then the focus of the Economic Development Commission should undoubtedly be business retention, understanding how businesses are reacting with the town and where there are challenges and, and seeing whether or not there could be some changes in, in, in various to help businesses come along. For us to understand what businesses want to come into town and for us to compare that with what businesses we would like to come into town and what, what, what our infrastructure can bear and so on. At the moment, with nobody reporting to the Economic Development Commission, no staff, it, it's very difficult to do that sort of work. And so it's challenging for us to come up with meaningful direction for your recommendations for you from an economic development point of view.
I think there's also an element of as people come into town to understand how to navigate things, you know? A lot of zoning is a big part of that. So we have, but you know, our town planner really is regulator more. And so trying to find that person that in some ways is kind of the advocate for, you know, somebody coming into town that's looking for development. And so that doesn't, it just helps them kind of facilitate the process better. So there's kind of a gap, I think we've been seeing recently regarding that. I think also if you look at the strategic plan and we talked about, you know, the town's vision is not more a traditional economy. We're not looking to bring large massive manufacturing operations or, you know, we're really looking more to like leverage our natural beauty, our history, our wonderful, you know, you know, shopping district, events, you know, to try to draw people into town, um, to support our local businesses. So there's like this tourism element or marketing element, and that was something that our previous person had, had a lot of strength in, right? In terms of marketing and, and that. So, you know, it's hard because we're, we're in a, you know, we're not big enough to need that strong development type skillset. But, you know, we still have gaps in terms of what we can do to support even our local businesses. So this business retention plan, I know that the, the EDC has been working a lot and trying to do that more, but it takes data, it takes handholding. It takes information flow, day-to-day consistency, consistent interaction with the town to kind of keep it going, right? Because you're a body of volunteers.
That coordination role, again, is, is critical, both for existing businesses that want to change or expand or new businesses coming in, or even within the town, the various commissions and committees that exist need, need to be coordinated.
So I think that like the thought is today to start that conversation and see is now the right time as we enter the budget process to think about bringing that part-time position back. Do, how do we want to look at it? She was, it was literally 50/50. So I can't remember if she was Guilford. And she was actually a Guilford employee and then we just reimbursed them for the cost of the position. And it, it was great. You know, it actually worked very well, but it was very situational based on the person. They hired somebody part-time now who is, I think, retired and wouldn't be interested in, in doing the shared position. There's also the option of looking at some sort of consultancy resources, you know? So I know I spoke into Aaron to think about this more and, you know, if the board is comfortable with me doing a lot more investigation, maybe coming up with some recommendations that might be in this, this year's budget. So I wanted to get thoughts from, from the board about that.
Sounds like it's needed based on what these guys are saying.
Well, I think, well, so I think Peggy touched on, there's a tension that we have in Madison that maybe is even unique to Madison between wanting a, a commercial tax base and not wanting a commercial tax base. And I think that at the very least, we owe it to the commission to have their role in the town aligned with the, the support that we're going to give them. If that's financial support or, or staff support or whatever. That we, we shouldn't have tension between what they're trying to do and what we're actually doing, right? Because judge us, judge, you know, you can tell what our priorities are by how we fund. And so we, we absolutely have to harmonize that. I think as an exercise, we should, you know, you know, we should look at that. But I don't think we should consider it to be a done deal. That's what we're going to do because the budget's a big thing.
And I, there's a whole process that I prefer. I think if there were ever a time to explore it too, it's, you know, the need that Andrew's expressing, but also we have the Facilities Committee conducting their studies and looking at town properties and that sort of thing. And it, it could be a great opportunity for either consultant or an individual in this role to work with both of these groups that we have actively working in town to bolster, you know, our economy and our tax base. But I agree with what Bruce is saying, you know, it would have to be the right person with the right goals in mind. So, you know. Yeah, I think not a done deal, but definitely a strong consideration.
Yeah. As it relates to the, the draft charge, I, I don't think we should move forward with approving anything until we have that clarity about how we're going to support them. Because there's no way in creating deliverables from them if we're not going to support them or deliverables from them that are out of line with the support that we are going to give.
I think that, I think we 100% endorse that.
So the, the other high level concern that I had was the insertion into planning and zoning process.
I changed, I suggested a change of wording when that came up.
Okay. So the draft we received says reviewing major planning applications?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So my concern is from a statutory perspective, I don't think that you have a natural role in that. Having planning zoning invite you into the process, I think, could be productive and good, but I don't, I, I, we need to take another look at, at codifying your role in reviewing.
I think, I think we may be wordsmithing. The, the objective, we, we obviously need to monitor planning applications or be made aware of planning applications or, because there are going to be planning applications that have, are, are particularly positive or against economic development goals, however they're defined. And if that was the case, then as a commission, one would want to say, this achieves some of those goals and from, you know, from an economic point of view. That's not to say that we bear any more influence on the outcome than a private individual, but that as a commission, if we could support or, or give a, a perspective.
So I, I think we are in agreement that there is a natural reason for you to be involved in the conversations that as a stakeholder, you know, that, that it makes sense.
I think that is worth it.
It needs, it needs to, I think, come from planning and zoning to invite you into the process rather than us writing into your charge that you're there. I actually don't think we can do that.
There may be some legality to the PT.
So we're not disagreeing with the thought. It's how do we best implement?
More the wording because they, you know, the public sees what's coming forward, right? And the, and the pipeline for planning zoning, the agenda. So there's all regulatory. This isn't them in the regulatory process of approval. I think it's more as a procedure that they would, you know, they're, they see that they would review applications, you know, and they could come forward and, and advocate or not as a, as a spokesperson or as a member of the public, you know, during the hearing process. I don't think the intention was for you to be part of the regulatory approval process. That's that.
It was just to be made.
It's just more, yeah. So I think it's more like to, to your point, it's more like how you couch that, like just saying. And then the other piece is that in a lot of towns that have like a really active economic development director, they're there way before it goes to planning and zoning, right? They're, they're behind the scenes, working things out, making sure things are coming forward, that the application is, you know, worded the way it should be worded, you know, using all the resources of town, right? So I think if we, in that sense, but they're not part of planning, to your point, planning and zoning is approval process, right?
You didn't state that.
So, yes. So I think there's just some wordsmithing of how we could put it in there. And then I think you raise a fair point. This is going to be, you know, a discussion over the next couple of months, right? So we want to make sure that where we end up with resources kind of marries what we're going to end up putting in the chart.
I think that's a sensible way.
Yeah. And one of the other changes in here was to standardize the terms. For some reason, EDC was five years and we wanted to make everybody four years, you know, with staggered terms and consistent with all the other boards of town. And I think that got changed, right?
I'm not sure whether, there are still elements of this which say, needs to be amended. And it's, it's the legal section under creation and, and the, the, I, I don't know how to standardize the legalese behind it.
Well, the town council reviewed it and she did make a comment about that one.
Yeah.
But we'll go back, we'll look at this again and, and, and find wording that is more fitting to what you're, you're getting, right? And in that process.
Did you say you did already get Aaron's feedback? Steve, did you say you already did get Aaron's feedback also on this or no?
No, town council.
Town council.
Town council. Yeah. And so.
It feels like there's a natural connection to town planner and.
No, she was, she was copied on this for review. Yeah. Yeah. So, but, but well, this is draft and this was a possible action. So that's because I knew there was going to be some conversation. So I don't think we feel, there's no urgency to approve it tonight. I think it starts the conversation though. And I'll double, I know Aaron was involved or copied on this. And I know our town council read it and she was the one that flagged what the regulatory issue, like the wording, which I, you saw.
And we did try and, I did try to wordsmith it to meet that requirement, but I clearly wasn't successful.
But that's okay. I think this starts. Um, but that's okay. I think, um, this starts the conversation. I think we're going to try to get some more. And, and Aaron was going to research a little bit more about how other towns handle this of our same, same size in terms of addressing this need. Um, and so we'll come back to this and, and, you know, see what we end up, where we're going with the budget process.
And again, it comes back to that coordination role, uh, but within the town.
Yeah.
Co- coordinating our response to a particular development or whatever it is. So an internal as well as an external coordination role.
No, I think, um, it's all worth, uh, a conversation because just I know anecdotally things pop up all the time and it doesn't land naturally and it'll land in my office and I do what I can. But there's a point where you need that day-to-day kind of, you know, assistance that's there um, in accessing resources and research and, um, and follow-up with people that are speaking English about land or businesses. So, um.
If you, if you're a new business coming into town, there is nobody who can tell you what you need in terms of, I need to go to the fire department, I need to go to the, then the health department, I need to go to the back, you know, what? There is no one who you can turn to and say, give me that checklist, what do I need to do?
And, and even, even whether it's housing or commercial, there's really not, if it's, you know, somebody that does that guiding work. I mean, they, they're helpful. I, I wouldn't say that. They definitely do, but there's a, it's just a different, you know, function, right? Of what they're providing. So, um, so I think to, to, the plan would be then we'll just table this, have a follow-up conversation. I, I meant this is kind of introducing the idea that we want to consider this for the budget. Um, and then we'll work on the charger a little bit more. And then we'll have this probably in, uh, you know, maybe the end of October, early November, come back with more details. Cause the budget has to be submitted by the end of the year, uh, in terms of any kind of new positions. So, okay?
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. Um, so, um, the next item is an update, uh, item number nine. It's an update from Neck River Elementary School Building Committee. Um, and so we've got, um, here, which Adam, uh, from Colliers will be speaking as well as the Chair of New, uh, Neck River School, Graham Curtis. So welcome. And I know there's a presentation, um, that you guys got in your packet, um, and Adam will start, uh, start, we'll start off with the presentation, I think, Adam, if that makes sense. Do you want to share it or is it better? He's got it. Okay.
Oh, perfect. All right. Uh, so good evening, everyone. I'm Adam Vaidis, College Project Leaders. I see Graham is also on as well. Um, so in, by and large, just want to walk through some of the slides here to provide an update largely focused on the, it's called the end of the new building construction, uh, finances as it pertains to what might come next. And I'll go over just a high level before I just blast through all the slides. Cause a bit about the budget history. So we understand where we're talking about in terms of when we say budget, what does that budget mean? We'll talk about some of the projected final costs for the project, the next steps there. Some summaries about, uh, what costs have been expended and then, um, wrap up with some of the information about, uh, potential Ryerson effort, potential solar effort, et cetera. So, uh, to start with, when we say, when we refer to budget within this slide deck, we're referring to that same amount that was appropriated back in the original referendum. So sixty-one point one five million, uh, in twenty twenty-one. Uh, there was an addition and then a subsequent subtraction of just about three and a half million, uh, both from Poulsen and then returned to Poulsen. Uh, if, uh, those that are listening recall, there was concerns about the overall project budget as we were going through cost estimating during design. And then ultimately, once we went through the bidding process and bids came in favorably, um, and some of the unknown, uh, construction costs that typically crop up during the initial portions of construction. Once those risks were mitigated, those funds were able to be returned, uh, back to Poulsen. So again, when we're saying budget, we're, we're talking about that sixty-one point one five million.
Yeah, I think I think I just highlight this because as we recall, we had to have approved funding in order to go out to bid for the project. So that's where we transferred the funding. Oh, we're hoping that we weren't going to need it, but we have. So unfortunately it's all come back. So just wanted, I think it was, I like that. There's still a little confusion about, well, what about the whole? Well, the whole money is not, we're back on the, it was approved.
Yes.
Okay.
Next slide. So again, of that sixty-one point one five, uh, the project is currently projecting the final total cost of the new building, uh, to be right around the fifty-nine million dollar mark. You see some of the range there, um, and I can talk about, um, some of the, why there's a range within, um, that value. Mainly we're cleaning up, uh, some of the, um, unused budget items. There is some, uh, some change orders still to finalize, uh, that retract on time and material basis within the project. Uh, and then there's some unused monies within the construction manager's contract that will be returning back to the town once all of the, uh, once the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted on subcontractor payments. So hence, hence the range, uh, even though the building's open, there's still the financial closeout that needs to, to occur. Point of note is that that figure of fifty-eight, uh, point eight to fifty-nine point six, that excludes the demolition of Ryerson, which we'll talk about here, uh, in a few slides. Uh, the anticipated total amount of state reimbursement is currently projected between fifty-four and a half and fifty-five and a half. Um, based on some of the change orders that we've seen, uh, submitted to the state to date and how they deem those to be either eligible or ineligible for construction. Um, and it really, the, the final answer to what is the amount of money received from the state will depend upon how much is actually spent. So fifty-eight point eight versus fifty-nine point six, um, as well as the state's final determination of ineligibility and, uh, how it, uh, how those math, that mathematics works out at the end of the audit process, which may take several years. So, um, the question of, you know, what's the final answer on reimbursement? Won't be officially known for some time until the state completes their audit process.
And I just, can I just break in one second? Uh, so with all of the ranges that you've got in these numbers, um, none of those ranges change the sixty-one point one five million. It simply changes the amount of bonding we ultimately end up with, either to our favor or, or not to our favor. Correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, next slide. Um, so this slide is just a, um, uh, high-level accounting of, of sources and uses of funds, pulled from coordination with State T. Nobitz, the, the finance department. At the top, within the sources, you can see again, the original, uh, referendum budget. Uh, we, at the beginning of the project, there was the anticipated, uh, amount of reimbursement of nine point eight million. Um, that will be exceeded by a projected, uh, five million or so, uh, fifteen point five is at the high end. But either way, that four to five million dollars, uh, is still on, on track to be realized in terms of the amount of additional funding coming back from the state for this project. So, uh, with that in consideration, that would suggest the final result of bond issuance is needed to cover the cost would be forty-five point six million. And in addition to the sixty-one point one five, there are additional monies projected to come back to the town from sources relevant to the Neck River project. Uh, namely the geothermal tax credit reimbursement, um, which is projected to be, uh, at or above two million dollars, uh, based on the tax consultant's initial assessment of the project. And then the ever-source clean energy rebates, uh, four hundred and ten thousand, uh, which town already has a memorandum of understanding, um, with ever-source for that. So we're just filing the documentation to get that payment. So again, the sixty-one point one five is separate from the additional two point four one that's projected to be coming back to the town.
So, and I, I just want to highlight that, that extra two point four million dollars, we could apply it and, and bond less. Or we can use it to fund other things related to the project, which is what the use is kind of outlined below, right? Um, so, um, and also just want to highlight, I mean, that's two point four million there plus the additional state money, which when this was voted on, um, at referendum, we weren't expecting that five point six million. Uh, we, we weren't expecting anything related to the, um, tax credits. So that's a nice eight million dollars that we are ahead of in terms of, you know, uh, and, and reducing bond needs possibly. So.
Which is all very, we should probably have a conversation about that two point four million dollars. Cause all the other stuff, there's really no found money in there, but that is found money.
Yeah.
That, um.
The two point four, yes.
That we either have to put against the forty-five, six fifty, then reduce the bonding or make, or make that decision. But I think.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be talking more about that. And I think, um, we're feeling good that we're going to get it. There's a lot of uncertainty at the beginning of the year because this has to do with, um, you know, some of the federal changes. But fortunately, we're going to fall within the timeline because these are eliminated. So we're getting this in like right under, right, right at the finish line. We're going to be able to get, we're getting in our application this year and this year will qualify. We've confirmed that, right? From the consultants, we've already received the geothermal eight hundred thousand dollars back on the geothermal. So we got a check from the feds a couple of months ago on that. This falls within what was approved in that bill, right? Um, that were good in terms of the timing to apply for these tax credits also. So we, there's nothing to lead us to think that we won't get them. Yes.
Um, that, that's my understanding, yes. And, uh, we've, the project team has been actively working with the tax consultant on the documentation in anticipation of the submission in, uh, just as soon as we hit January for the new fiscal year. Uh, that's my understanding is when.
Yeah. And a year later, we probably wouldn't have gotten it. So, um, so we're fortunate that we got it in within the timeframe.
Is it possible to use a portion of that two point one at the bottom? If in fact the Ryerson demolition, demolition number is higher?
So now it is, the national estimate is three million. Right. So, so I think that's our best side. So I think that if you look at what the, you know, you've got, um, and not to steal your thunder here, Adam, but basically, you know, if you take out from the, 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 the new school is coming under budget, under construction budget, right? So if you take out, um, the, uh, money that was allocated to Ryerson for the budget, budget, so we still potentially could have up to nine hundred thousand dollars. Now that number could be lower or higher. There's ranges that you saw on the other, right? So we don't know. Um, but there is additional funding there. That could go towards the demolition as well. And then on top of that, we have the two point four million dollars in bonus. So there's a lot of opportunities to help make up that gap in terms of the demolition estimate that. The other thing that we could use the money for is solar. And that is, um, another thing we're facing a hard deadline. We have to get these installed and I'll let him talk about this later, but we have to make that decision soon. If we want to get like the thirty percent tax break that on, because the deadlines, they pretty much eliminated all the subsidies for solar. So if we don't pull the trigger now, in the next, you know, three to six months, we will not get any kind of reimbursement at all. We're in store. So, solar. We'll make the school net zero and will also save us a fortune on electric bills over the first twenty-three years. So these are all things we have to talk about. They don't have to, we don't have to use the project money for that. We might just decide to do that another channel, but I'm just highlighting that it's related to school. I don't want to talk about it.
The roof was set up. A- Adam, am I remembering this right? That the roof was sort of prepped for solar or ready?
Yes, that was, that was the, uh, intention behind the design, um, to have the building be solar ready. So there are conduits in place where, um, there was additional change order that's actually being contemplated to, to further help prep some of the environment. But yes, you're correct that the building was set up with future solar in mind. So now it's just that last mile component of final design, bidding and then installation.
So, so I, I don't know if you, the next slide talks more obviously about demo and all that. If you want to go through that, Adam.
Yeah. So, uh, again, as, as mentioned, the, the notion is that there's several million potentially coming that it can be returned back to the town from the product, uh, from the new construction project to fund some assembly of additional scope items. Um, the, obviously the two largest ones are Ryerson demolition and solar, as has been mentioned. Um, the rough estimated project cost for Ryerson demolition is approximately three million, uh, plus some consultant costs. Uh, to answer a question that's been asked a couple of times, just in terms of sign meetings on how that, that number aligns with this, uh, line item in the original budget of one point two million. Um, that one point two million from twenty twenty-one contemplated, uh, the demolition of Ryerson as part of the whole, uh, school project. So one point two didn't include some of the other costs later down in the budget of, for design and, and site work and things of that nature. Um, so for, uh, anyone sort of tracking how this, this cost has evolved, one point two million in twenty twenty-one would be compared with approximately, uh, one point five million today. Plus, um, there's nine hundred thousand dollars in some additional allowances that the hazardous materials consultant has identified, now that they've actually gone into Ryerson and done sampling and done investigations within the building, uh, to refine that scope and, and identify what potential costs should be carried. So, um, that's, that's how we've gotten from one point two to this number that's over three. It's, it's a collection of items, um, between an original just a line item and a budget and some, some real cost estimates.
So, and this three million is kind of the top end number. So if they do this additional work, which I think they're going to be doing, there's about six hundred that's, it could go away. Or maybe not. So we don't know. So that's why it's still ranges that we're dealing with, right?
Yeah. And, and to that point, um, the, the last school building committee meeting, um, the hazardous materials consultant was authorized to proceed with, uh, some additional testing to, as Peggy mentioned, sharpen the pencil on that six hundred thousand. And, um, the hope would be that they can confirm that it's not needed, in which case that number goes to zero or confirm that that scope's actually required, in which case we're not dealing with a, you know, a question mark on a range between zero and, and six hundred. There's a, there's a better definition on what that scope is and why, uh, leading into a big package. So that, that work is ongoing. It just got approved. So that'll be scheduled and conducted over the next, uh, several weeks. Uh, but again, if those numbers are, if that scope is not needed, then that would drop the estimate down to, um, you know, somewhere around two point four million for the construction, uh, abatement and construction, demolition component of the project. In addition to Ryerson, there is the, as Peggy mentioned, the notion of solar, uh, to, to get to net zero status and reduce utility costs. Um, the estimated total project cost for that is, uh, over two million. The timing, uh, I can show probably more, uh, helpfully in a, in an upcoming slide in terms of an overall anticipated schedule. But, um, the, the key takeaway is again, that, that trying to hit the durations and timeframe in order to potentially yield, uh, additional tax credits for those panels. Next slide, please. And again, this is just included for reference as to, you know, that one point two two five in the original, uh, project budget breakdown you see from twenty twenty-one, that's, that's where that number came from. Next slide. And so to, to kind of wrap things up, this is, um, a high-level overview of inflows, outflows and potential durations as the, uh, town concludes the construction of the new building and, uh, anticipates potential other projects to do some, some of the either Ryerson demolition or, or solar work. Uh, so as you can see at the top for inflows, um, over the next, uh, month or so, uh, the budget, definition and parcelling out which, which purchase orders could be closed, which budget line items can be, uh, pulled out back into the, the amount of return funds that's getting resolved. Uh, the anticipated amount of that money is between one and, one and a quarter million. Um, for reference, currently the project has, uh, one million dollars in, in contingency that's unallocated. So that would, the theory is that that is getting built up as we, um, close out some of the individual line items within the budget. And then on, in addition to that, um, as Gilbane completes their punch list items and gets closed out, leading into the warranty period for the project, there are allowances and contingencies within their contract that when they're unused, returned back to the town as the owner, uh, contractually. So that would again, increase the amount that the project returns back for potential. when they're unused, returned back to the town as the owner uh, contractually. So that would again, increase the amount that the project returns back for potential town use. As we continue over to the right hand side, um, the darker green items are reflective of those uh, monies coming in that are outside of that referendum. So light green is within the sixty one point one. The dark green are the, is the two point four that comes outside of that and the approximate timeline for those items being released, uh, including ever source. Um, the IRA tax credit uh, should be filed in January. So uh, I've been informed that the payment for that comes about twelve weeks thereafter. So uh, in the spring, that two million dollars should be uh, let by the government, federal government. And then uh, later in the year, potentially into twenty twenty seven, that last bit of the ever source funds um, should be forthcoming once the, the one year verification period of the project is complete. In terms of the Ryerson demolition and solar, uh, a potential solar project, those items, again, these are very rough timelines, uh, intentionally. Um, the Ryerson demolition timeline is, is particularly rough just because it would require some scope definition on, you know, is it just a, does it become an empty lot? Is there some sort of putback to the project, et cetera? Um, and there's less of a defined timeframe for the project because there's not like a rebate we're trying, the project, the, the town is trying to hit. So again, the durations on those are very rough at this, this time. However, uh, in terms of the, you can see below the Ryerson uh, line item there, the pink bars, there's the red text reflecting anticipated uh, outlays for contracting uh, to make that scope a reality. So uh, again, the notion is that there'd be a confirmation of the project start and, and uh, retainage of consultants to re-finalize the design documents for the demolition, uh, both the architect, uh, site engineer and um, finalized hazardous materials drawings. And as well as the determination how the project would be managed, whether the town staff, uh, outside consultants, et cetera. Then a few months later, having a uh, another outlay for consultants for construction administration for the hazardous materials. And then finally, that three million dollar number we've been seeing for the actual uh, the hard costs demolish the building and, and prep the site. Below that is the uh, the pink bars for um, a potential solar project. Then this one again is much more uh, constrained in terms of timeframe. Uh, I believe that the time for the installation of the solar panels and having them come online, the deadline for that, I believe is July thirty first. Double check that with the tax consultants, but uh, the notion being is that the uh, project starts and then is completed by July thirty first in order to be eligible for those tax credits. Um, so completion of the main effort and then, you know, the month of August of twenty twenty six to clean up the project, close, close out punch list items, et cetera. Backing, pulling back from that and coordinating with some of the uh, consultants that worked on the main neck river project that yields the rough timeline we see here where if there's an authorization uh, to proceed with design documents, starting in, let's say, November. The consultants need approximately eight to twelve weeks to finish documents for those. Four month period for uh, town review approvals, uh, bidding and contracting. And then ultimately dating into that uh, solar installation work over the summer while school was out. So again, not a perfectly precise timeline, but much, much more refined and defined based on what the town is trying to hit in terms of potential tax credits. Um, and again, the.
Well, no, I was just going to say that I think the, the um, we're not going to know how much money is left over in the neck river project for a bit. In the meantime, we need to make a decision on solar soon. You saw how aggressive that is, right? So um, you know, that is something that I think the board should take a deeper dive into and have a conversation because um, we're gonna, it's, you know, we haven't confirmed all the details yet, but typically if it works like geothermal. Percent of the cost, right? You know, so it cuts down that cost uh, significantly on the two million. Um, so, and then the benefits, and this is where I think we would want the details on that. The expectation is you're basically have no electricity costs, right? For the building. I mean, which runs the heating and cooling system because it's geothermal. So um, I think it's important that we take a hard look at this because we have to make a decision soon. Process going because unfortunately we have a gun to our head because of the changes in legislation and the e- accessibility of the funding. And that shouldn't impact, I mean, most likely, we don't have enough money to do Ryerson. Right? Possibly. It sounds like there's not enough money left in there. So we would have to look at another funding source for solar. But consider the leftover, um, the unfinished proceeds. Isn't that what attorney, or attorney, attorney ritter? Yeah, no, there's a number of, I think, ways we can, we can consider some of the academy funds. Again, we're going to have a lot of things to think about. Um, but I think this is one where we do have a much stricter, right?
It would be appropriate for us to say, okay, well, these two projects are a priority. They need to happen. Stacy from Board of Finance, can you guys help us figure out how to, or figure out?
Figure out how to pay for it.
Right. I, I think, you know, we're looking at the operational imperative, the operational priorities. I, I think that's why the board finance is here is to, is to figure out how to execute. So, I, I mean, I would say that, that both projects need to get done. So it's a matter of what's the most efficient way to. Whether that comes out of the bond proceeds or comes out of the, you know, whatever.
So I think it's worth then taking the next step to get a deeper dive into solar with a real better timeline and also quantify the benefits of doing it, right?
Absolutely. I mean, i- intuitively, it, it seems like a grand uh, that this is, this is a project that will pay dividends for at least the next twenty years, right? Which is, uh, is that the life of the solar panels, twenty years?
Yeah, generally. Yeah. I mean, they don't turn into pumpkins after twenty years, but yeah, that's, that's how they're.
But then we'll have quantum atomic um, mini nuclear reactors or whatever, and you know, who knows?
So I think that um, I mean, well, first of all, I just want to compliment Polliers and the building committee for doing an incredible job and ending up where we are, right? This is, we're in a great place. We have, you know, choices to make with leftover funding. And um, you know, I just appreciate all the hard work because I know it's a tough slog. And we had a copy wrote in the beginning. It was kind of scary back two, three years ago with all the construction inflation and everything else that was happening, but we managed to get through this. You did some smart moves by doing advanced procurement for things, you know, locking and pricing when we needed it. Um, and you've just been, the both of you have done an incredible job managing this project. So thank you for that.
And Graham and Alan, we've signed you up for the next project.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're not going to let you leave. So, and I, I know. So I think that um, so I think that our commitment now is to then look both of these to Bush's point and to Jen's point. You know, these are both important projects. We gotta go through the next step and figure this out. Um, how can we make this happen and how do we pay for it? So um, so with that, I don't know if there's any other uh, questions that you might have for these guys that we'll be seeing them again. Um.
Whatever, whatever with that, I know Graham, you were talking at the walkthrough when the open house was happening, the bed, um, garden in the back that was sort of promised. What, what is that?
Yes, great. Thanks for picking that up. Yeah. So this Saturday, we're looking for volunteers to help install the pollinator garden along the neck river as promised, Altra. So if anybody wants to show up, um, calling out anybody who's listening, they want to show up on uh, Saturday morning at nine AM um, with a shovel, they can help install the pollinator garden that we're providing and go to install it with the projects, providing the plants, but we're doing volunteer labor to install, install that. So put it on your calendars and bring your shovel if you're around and hopefully.
What time is that happening, Pam?
Can we have um, can we have Matty?
Nine AM?
Nine AM, Saturday, twenty seventh. Yep.
You can do that. I'm sure the school's pushing it too, to the PTOs and things like.
We've got some students' labor coming out and things like that. No child labor, all volunteers. So. I've told this pretty easy digging. Much easier than the Rockland Preserve. If anybody who was uh, participated in that uh, slum. I, we pre, pre-softened the dirt for those who want a little easier uh, time.
Well, there's also a beautiful playground to also.
Offset with your kids.
So, um, so um, I, I guess with that, then just once again, thank you and um, we'll continue the conversation on both of these going forward. Um, if you're happy to pay for it. So um, I appreciate all the hard work. Okay?
And, and Woody, Woody would, as, as you all know, Woody would vote for the uh, solar.
Yes.
He was a strong advocate for that. So I'll, I'll put that plug in for Woody uh, on the solar side.
I saw, I saw him talking to you at the open house.
I promise, when he, when he joined the committee, when he came back to the committee, I promised him I, I'd get him a net zero building. So I gotta, let's hopefully deliver it.
Okay. I think the town has a great track record of, of the benefits of solar because we do have it on the deployments and it's been phenomenal. So it's really helped us in some of these kind of, especially when electricity prices have just continued to rise. So I think it's been worth the investment. Uh, all right. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate hanging in there. Um, and we will continue to be continued. Um, the next conversation is uh, related to an update on the Middle Beach Road and Island Avenue flood mitigation study. So if you recall, this is a project that um, we have intercoastal resiliency. It's in part of CIP, but it's funded through some of our coastal resiliency um, funding that we've put aside. This is a problem area in town. We've had, seen more and more significant and recurring flooding. Um, and so we started a project to look at how we can improve the drainage there. So um, Rob has now come back with a couple of options, which are very, very much wide range of what we could do and how much we would want to spend on this project. We do think this is something that could qualify potentially for some grant money also. So it's important to get a, a pick a plan, design and then maybe try to go for some additional funding. So with that, Rob, I'll let you uh, walk us through it.
Sure. Thank you. Um, Jeannie, could you do me a favor and promote uh, Jim Murak from SLR, please?
I tried. He, I'll try again.
Okay. It's all right. He'll, he'll jump on when he's here. Um, yeah. So listen to um, just to reiterate Peggy's point. Yep. This is a a project that we had in the CIP, the, the coastal resiliency section. We used some funding. Uh, we hired back in um, earlier this year, we hired uh, SLR consulting um, to perform the flood mitigation study for Middle Beach Road, Middle Beach Road West and Island Avenue. Yep. So uh, James Murak was the project manager for SLR on the project. Um, basically as, as Peggy noted, um, this is an area that's been prone to fo- uh, flooding for a number of years. Um, you know, just like many places of the shoreline, but this definitely sees some significant um, rainfall and it becomes problematic, especially during these high precipitation events with our EMS fire and police, it becomes impassable at times. Um, even Prospect Road, Tuxus Road. So um, Jeannie had included, well, I couldn't really include it in your packet because it was seven hundred pages. A lot of it was hydraulic calculations. So um, you could definitely take a deep dive, you know, when you're uh, on the weekend, your free time on the weekend, if you want to kick your feet up and go through the entire thing. Um, I'm sure you certainly can, but what I've done here for, for this evening, um, I, I like to be brief. Um, but I just kind of have on the PDF I'm about to show, just kind of a cursory review of uh, the plans, the ultimately the alternatives matrix and um, and the cost estimate. Now um, as I, you know, briefly re- review these three items, if you have any questions, you know, I'll, I'll certainly um, I've, I've certainly open to a- answering any questions. And if it's anything on the technical side, something that I'm not familiar with, I want to make sure that Jim was on the call here. So he, he's available for any additional questions you may have. So.
Just a quick, because the package just has that kind of matrix, but
Yep.
you and I had looked at, there was a map, like three different maps that showed. I thought that seemed to me the easiest to explain it, you know?
Yeah. So I'm gonna, I'll, I'll go through that right now. And then Jim, if I, if I'm missing something, feel free to just uh, you know, cut me right off in case I, I miss any, any major bullet points here. Um, but yeah, I have, I'll, I'll share my screen right now to.
The visual was easier than trying to understand it on here. I mean, it says all the pros and cons, but um, I think the visual explains like the different options better.
Sure. And I also think, I think after showing these visuals, the matrix will actually kind of, they'll, it'll make more sense. Um, so basically this is our, this is a, this isn't even one of the, the main three options. This, this can be done um, without alternative one, two or three, which you're going to see in the subsequent sheets. This is to provide um, flooding and uh, relief to um, the neighborhood here on Tuxus Road. Uh, briefly, it's uh, this is currently a pipe, um, one section of uh, twelve inch pipe that's existing here now. And we're seeing significant flooding throughout this area down to the intersection of Prospect and throughout uh, Tuxus. And as part of this study, um, SLR did a great job of preparing a letter prior to them really digging into any of the design work and performing the hydraulic study. They, they, we sent that a letter to everyone in the neighborhood um, with, with uh, my phone number as well as SLR's number to give any sort of feedback that they may have, any pictures, any flooding that they're aware of, driveways, the roadway, catch basins, any, any historical knowledge they could provide. And we gleaned a significant, a significant amount of information through that process. So I thought that was a great way to kick off the project. Um, so some of the, some of that feedback we received was on Tuxus. And this was a way um, that again, for relatively low cost comparatively to some of the other options, and it can be done outside of uh, the other alternatives. Uh, it is to provide this additional um, twelve inch pipe between these, you know, um, where the existing pipe currently uh, lies between this head wall and this head, head wall. In addition to um, installing this, this pipe, um, regrading and clearing the channel, which basically goes from Tuxus, this goes behind the tennis courts. Um, I'm sure you've, wherever you come down island, you see uh, this largely vegetated area. Um, there's definitely room, as you can see from the pro- profile here. This dash lines the existing grade. If we, if we, we're basically where this bold line is, there's a sniffing in amount that we can clear out and provide additional uh, cross sectional area for the water to flow. So that's basically this first, I don't want to call it alternative. I don't want to confuse everyone here, but this is one option to remedy some flooding in the immediate Tuxus Road area. Again, that can be done as part of the greater project or can be done standalone.
Rob, Rob, is, are these options, like you could do multiple or, or are they?
No, so. Yeah. So you'll see, you'll see when I get to the, the matrix, but this, this option here, um, this, we could just go out and, you know, procure and move, move into the design phase of just this section here that could provide some flo- flooding, flooding relief to Tuxus Road. Um, but there's also larger scale alternatives that are really addressing um, the problem, which is this ultimately this intersection here, which is Island Avenue, Middle Beach Road West and down here, Middle Beach Road. And I, I'll show you those briefly in the next couple of slides here.
That little fix there will do a lot for Tuxus. Um, it's not going to solve the whole problem, but it's something we should do no matter what. It's, it's, that's not as costly, costly a firm call.
Yep. I'll, I'll run through the estimates right at the end here, but just this is the first alternative. Um, and again, right now, what we currently have, this is, I, I wanted to start with this one, not only because it's our first alternative, but um, basically it shows the existing of what's out here now. Uh, basically from this, from the existing title wetland here, there's an existing pipe. And uh, you know, I've, I was out there with SLR and Savvy and Sons. We did a TV test on these uh, these pipes, sent the camera down here and it turns right, sort of right where this angle point is. Um, there was a blockage. And then there's also a, a junction that we think could, could uh, get to, but we're assuming is failing. Uh, as well as the pipe, the current pipe outlet that heads out to the Long Island Sound. So basically from here, from the Madison Beach Club to this mystery junction box, including this pipe from the wetland outlets to the sound. And by all investigation that. And by all investigation that we performed here, um, between, you know, Johnny and Akko, myself from years of being out there, um, and then also SLR's investigative work. We, we know, we, we could definitely, we could pretty much, uh, uh, conclude that the, the system here is failing. So this first alternative is essentially kind of like a replacement in kind. Um, and again, you'll see more of the data in the matrix, but basically it's essentially keeping the same pipe from the tidal wetlands, uh, putting in a new pipe from the Madison Beach Club. And then putting in a new junction and outlawing, outletting to the Long Island Sound. So it's essentially sort of, you know, we're not, we're not really changing anything as far as the outlet or, um, you know, the pipes will increase a bit, but really, um, we're not really altering, uh, the system uh, that's currently in place. Jim, do, is there anything that you want to add to, uh, this first alternative?
No, thanks, Rob. You're, you're doing a great job covering the alternatives. It, it's the one thing I can offer. I do have a few photos and up on my screen, if it's helpful for context to go through and explain sort of what you have now and what's failing, but it's totally up to you guys. I, I know you have a schedule to keep. So if you guys want to make this, uh, keep it expedited, I'm happy to wait till questions and answers at the end.
Well, why don't we continue with the maps right now? And then at the end, maybe it might help go back to the picture.
Let's do it.
Okay. So then, so that's alternative one is ba- basically a, uh, essentially a replacement in kind with some minor upgrades. Uh, the second option, um, we get to that here. This is the first part of it. So as you could see, this was from that previous, uh, alternative. This was that existing pipe from the tidal wetland. What we're looking to do here is separate the tidal wetland flow and, uh, the, the flow that, that's, that the runoff from the, the town's roadways, Middle Beach, Island Avenue. So what we do is we would just, instead of having that one outfall that goes out to the Long Island Sound here, this is the same tidal wetland. We would provide a single pipe, um, from the tidal wetland that would discharge, uh, at the Long Island Sound. Um, so this would basically everything that flows into this, this tidal wetland and this watershed. Um, cause there's a, there's a much larger tidal wetland on the north side of the, the street here. That would all essentially flow out, um, to the Long Island Sound. That being said, you know, then we, we get to the, uh, the Middle Beach Road, Middle Beach Road West, Middle Beach Road West, Middle Beach Road and Island Avenue. It would entail rerouting some of that, the roadway drainage and some of the drainage from the beach club. Um, this currently an easement that crosses the beach club property that heads out to the, the, the system that's failing. What we would ultimately do is reroute the drainage from the beach club property into a new town system on Island Avenue and convey. Um, so this is where that first, I don't want to call it alternative, that first Tuxus system comes into play with increased drainage and flow, uh, through that new pipe and through the drainage channel. Again, for reference, this is the tennis courts here. Um, the, uh, the flow would come across, ultimately make its way into the system, pick up the, the surf club, uh, all the roadway drainage, and then ultimately, uh, culminate in a new out, this is a brand new outfall, um, at the end of the, uh, the boat ramp here. So the, the, ultimately what we're doing is we're splitting the tidal drainage and the, um, and the roadway drainage into these two separate outfalls. Um, so that's pretty much alternative two. Uh, Jim, would you, anything to add on, on this alternative?
No, I, I think the benefit with this alternative is that not only do you not have town drainage crossing onto the beach club, private property. Uh, that's just something that from a legal perspective is a little bit difficult to maintain. So now you're rerouting the private drainage back into the town right away, which is more typical. Uh, you've separated the system. So now all that sediment and that debris that's coming from the tidal estuary that's clogging the existing system is separated, is divorced into its own system. So, so you've, um, sort of separated out that issue. And you can actually do, um, I can talk about the tidal elevations in a second, but this is such a low lying area. The, the intersection that Rob is showing right there, Middle Beach West and Island Avenue, that's, uh, what is the elevation there? It's, it's elevation, uh, 4.3 and high tide is 2.2 mean high water. And the, the one year, the high tide line, coastal jurisdiction line is 3.7. So it's about a half a foot higher than a, a, a tip, like a spring high tide. So because it's connected to the tidal estuary, uh, under current conditions, you can't do anything with backflow for prevention. You have to allow that tidal estuary to flush the tidal marsh. But if they're, if they're separated, you can do a backflow, backflow preventer on the, on the outfall there and, uh, give yourself a little bit more protection during those events.
And then thanks, Jim. So, and so that's, that's alternative two now. SLR also per- per- performed, um, an analysis on al- alternative three. It's not, it, you know, it, it has some interesting possibilities, but really for cost and complexity and the potential, uh, property acquisition or rights. We, we deemed it really isn't feasible or the most efficient solution. So to save some time here, I'm not really going to go over alternative three. Um, you know, we could always revisit that in the future, but right now really alternative one, which again is essentially a replacement in kind of what's out there. And alternative two, splitting the watershed, splitting the, uh, the drainage, uh, the title goes out to the Long Island Sound and improving the, uh, the drainage system, uh, on Middle Beach Road West, Island Avenue and Middle Beach Road. Um, these are really the two, uh, well, and one of these alternatives in conjunction with, I think, the first, um, option on, uh, if, again, the Tuxus Road, which could be done regardless of what we all do, alternative one or two on Middle Beach. So given we, we just kind of reviewed very quickly these sheets, now I think it might make a little bit more sense to take a quick peek at the, the matrix that SLR created here. So now that first one on Tuxus Road, uh, as SLR shows, the cost is relatively, and I'll get to the cost when, in a second, the cost is relatively low. Um, it's gonna definitely improve, uh, well, it will have a reduction in surcharging on Tuxus Road. And, um, it was recommended to be included again, standalone or with one of these alternates, one, two or three. Um, and then, so that leads us to alternative one, which was the, uh, essentially the reconstruction and the replacement in kind, uh, pretty much. Um, one thing to, to, to note on this is, you know, this is, this is the key line here, in my opinion, where reduction of surcharging at Middle Beach Road West and Island Avenue. And again, that's really, yes, we're definitely seeing flooding in other areas, Tuxus Road. Um, a little bit on prospects, a little bit down on Middle Beach Road, but some, the, the, the situation where it becomes impassable, especially to emergency vehicles is at that corner of Middle Beach Road West and Island Avenue. So as you could see, alternative one and three, three being the one I didn't go over, we're seeing very little reduction with that alternative. Um, but alternative two, separating the, the road drainage from the tidal wetland, we're seeing the greatest reduction, um, you know, for, you know, um, the hundred year storm event. So ultimately you see down here at the bottom with the overall recommendation provided by SLR. Um, you know, th- that is not alternative two is their ultimate recommendation where it's, it's a moderate cost, medium complexity and, and creates the highest benefit for the area there. So really my suggestion, I'm about to go to the flip to the cost estimate now is what I would like to do is look at the potentially doing alternative two. Also in conjunction with the Tuxus Road culvert repair, I think would provide the, the greatest benefit um, for that area as far as flood mitigation and, and, and drainage relief. Um, cost estimating here for that Tuxus Road culvert repair. Um, we're looking at, uh, estimated $289,000 and that's just for that Tuxus Road culvert repair. Alternative one, which again is a reconstruction, replacement in kind of what's out there. You're looking at $481,140. Um, again, little reduction, uh, to that, 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 that main intersection, uh, of the study. Uh, alternative two, uh, again, the recommended alternative, the price does increase here to $1,275,465. And then alter, again, alternative three, uh, I, that's significant, even more significant of a price, price increase 1.7 million. And again, not really a viable solution. So if you combine the two of these, uh, if we, if we went with the alternative two, you'd be looking at 1, 2, 7, 5 plus the, uh, the 289 from the Tuxus Road culvert repair. So I'd love to hear you guys' feedback. My, what I would like to do is ultimately see if we could add this to the CIP for, with these, with, with the Tuxus Pond, Tuxus Road, I keep saying Tuxus Pond. From the, uh, the timber walkway out there. Um, yeah. So ultimately I, I think the, the best option it would go is, would be to go with the recommended option by SLR, which is to be to include the Tuxus Road culvert repair with alternative two, which is to separate the road drainage from the tidal wetland.
But you're suggesting dropping into CIP in year five, Rob?
So we currently have, we currently have $500,000 allocated for construction for the project. So, you know, where I guess we'd be about a million short. Uh, we could put it in year five and then ultimately seek, uh, Jim, uh, you know, provided a, a checklist or essentially a word document that provided number of grants opportunities that are available out there, um, that could help offset the costs of this project. Maybe we put it in year five, then also in the meantime, start searching for, um, uh, additional funding opportunities. We do have, we do have a, a, approximately $60,000 for additional design costs in our planning. So if, if we do ultimately go with alternative two and the Tuxus Road culvert repair, we do have an additional $60,000 we could add to put towards the, uh, the final design, uh, of the project.
So we would, uh, we would submit this as part of the, you know, influence CIP committee. We're going to be meeting on Monday. So maybe this is a conversation we can kind of finalize on Monday, how will the town, how we want to submit it. I just can't imagine doing all that work down there and still having that, that intersection flood, right? And you're saying basically we could do the first one, but we're still going to have a lot of flooding there.
I also, I don't, I also don't see waiting five years. I, I think that's.
Well, and that's why, you know, Rob said it sounds like there's additional funding out there. So that could be helpful. But, you know, I agree, I agree with what Rob's saying. I know folks hate to hear us say we want to spend more money on anything, but I also know this has been a conversation that's been coming up for a number of years, um, that this needs to be fixed. And I just can't see putting money towards something if it's not going to fix the problem, if you're not going to have a significant improvement in it. So yeah, I mean, alternative two, you know, plus the, uh, Texas Road culvert repair that seems like the only choice.
Yeah. And, and again, again, there's a lot of information. If you, if you wanted to peruse the document further, you certainly can. If we wanted to discuss this again, we could certainly do that as well. I just wanted to provide an update on the, um, you know, we got with this completed study we received back in May, but due to the summer and, and the different meetings and different people being on vacation. Um, you know, I got pushed to September now where I just wanted to be able to provide, I said I would when it was completed, provide, you know, an update on the project and what, what the findings were. So again, we could always uh, have further discussion on this, but I just think it's a general, generally a good idea for all of you to kind of be in the loop on what alternatives are out there. Um, and what, and, and from SLR and in myself's perspective, what kind of makes the most sense.
I want to add one point if I can. And I, if I can figure this out, because I don't use Zoom very often, but this is, let me know if you guys are seeing the town GIS right now.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So this is a map. This is your, your GIS with 2023 aerial image, Madison Beach Club, where my cursor is in the bottom left. Purple hatches are NRCS wetland soils, just to give you an idea of, of sort of what the natural drainage was before development in this area. And the red air, red lines are the existing sort of, just in a rough approximation of what the existing drainage is doing. So the two, I'll say projects that Rob mentioned, there's alternative two, which is the more expensive fix, which addresses flooding in this area. But there's also the, the more cost effective fix of, of increasing the conveyance here. This intersection floods, just as this one does, through a different mechanism. This one's mostly through the wetland and pluvial rainwater runoff. It's several feet higher in elevation up here than it is here. So I think it's, it might be really attractive of an idea to say, well, it's a, a pretty affordable fix to, to just come in and address this issue and correct the flooding here. But that's going to send the water here. So if you do that work before you address this, no matter what alternative you choose, you might, um, be making one area slightly better, but making one area slightly worse. So I just wanted to throw that out as a caution. Um, the correct, you know, the proper chronological way to do it would be to address the, the lower lying area first with, you know, one of the alternatives and either concurrently or afterwards come in and do the upper area there.
Okay. Now that's helpful because my first thought was like, well, we have enough money to.
I wanted to mention it. Yeah.
Um, no, that's helpful.
You've done this a few times, huh?
Well, this is a fun, this was a, from a technical perspective, it was one of the more complicated ones, just with, you know, the rainwater, the runoff, the tidal marshes and the actual tidal surge. So, and, and really some of the flooding can be attributed just to the poor, uh, condition of, of that. You know, Rob mentioned that failing junction box. We were trying to locate that and I was actually out there with a shovel, a small four foot shovel. I started poking around and the shovel just went through, down, up to my elbow. It just, there's a sinkhole forming there and, and something we don't, we couldn't confirm without digging it up with a mini X, which wasn't uh, something that was accessible to us, but it's, it is collapsed, it's actively collapsing. Um, not only a safety issue, but at some point it could just sort of catastrophically collapse and, and there might be a bigger problem there. So.
All right. Okay. So, uh, good. Thank you, Rob. And this will be further conversation as we kind of finalize what we want to endorse for CIP. So.
Yeah. And I'm sure just having this conversation even for the residents that live down there, that dealing this, with this for so many years are going to be so happy.
That's one thing I think, um, you know, uh, I don't know. Have you talked to the beach club yet? Just so they understand. Um, you know, because I know they were very helpful in terms of coming out and providing access and everything like that. We might want to just have, have them, you know, because this is going to impact obviously their operations significantly because you're going to have to rip up their parking lot, right? Um, and then, uh, replace piping and everything else. So we'll talk about all that. I mean, this is not imminent. This is several years away anyway, but, um, you know, but I think it's, uh, worth having a conversation with them. So they understand a little bit more what might be coming in the next couple of years. And I, I think they're thrilled. I think anybody living in that area is going to be thrilled, but it's going to be disruptive while it happens. How long does a project like this typically take to complete?
Jim, take this one.
Yeah, probably. It would depend on the contractor and, um, the time of year. I think there's a big seasonality aspect to this area. So if you're performing the work in the winter where there's less traffic disruptions and they can uh, take up a little more space, maybe close a road rather than trying to accommodate a detour, they can do it a much faster. Um, we haven't done a full analysis of, you know, what, what it would look like, but I'm going to just sort of off the cuff, say maybe six, four to six months. Um, at the, at the, at the, probably at the highest, I would say, it could be done quicker than that.
We're very much in the infancy stage of this. Again, this was just more of the study, um, that we had funded and, you know, I want to just make sure, you know, we, we're all understanding of there's different alternatives that are out there and our, and our options and what are some of the estimated costs with those options? And then we could, you know, discuss moving forward.
Okay. Great. Good. Excellent work. Thank you, uh, Jim, and thank you, Rob. Okay. And we'll continue this conversation.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
Um, thank you. Uh, so next I, um, All right, thanks. Um, thank you. Uh, so next item on the agenda is item number eleven. And discussing action to approve a bid waiver request from Puppa Porcs to extend funds for riprap replacement on Green Hill Place. Simone?
Okay. We were about to talk about riprap.
Yeah.
Is everybody into riffraff or?
It's a little bit, it's a little bit more than your gravelly drive.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Okay. Learning a lot.
So, so this is a project actually that we um. We're in the process of working with the state on. Um, and it's a, and it's a major flooding issue on Green Hill Place. I don't know if you've been down there, but Green Hill Place floods tremendously during tidal actions, right? So, um, and some of it is we need to fix a repair that we had done probably what?
Two thousand nine.
Yeah, and it was a temporary structure was put in. And we never did anything beyond a temporary structure. So the temporary structure now isn't working anymore. Um, and so we need to kind of shore that up and then on top of that, we're going to work for a bigger plan with the state and the state is going to step up and look for funding.
This is the engine of Green Hill.
Yeah.
When it kind of goes.
This is behind BB Marine. So you, when you figure out old post road behind BB Marine, it turns into Green Hill Place at the, the curve in the road. And it used to go before the highway was built on ninety-five, it used to go through and connect to Green Hill Road essentially.
Okay.
So now it dead, it dead ends at Colstags on both ends.
It's all hard, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you know, the uh. This, as Peggy mentioned, the sheet pile was, it was a temporary fix that became somewhat permanent. Um, now we're working with the state to come up with a, you know, permanent solution. The state's getting take the lead and doing a permanent solution for the area. But this is, this, what this does is it's um, protecting it from further erosion. It's experienced erosion over time. And um, allows us to maintain the sort of temporary fix. Um, until, you know, permanent fix can be.
And, and, and it's kind of time sensitive. That's why we wanted to just get this done because we're holding the state up. They can't move forward in their process until we do this fix. They said until we complete this, they won't do it.
Right, so there was, yeah, there was two environmental permits that connected DEP. And then also, um, so we received that back in July, late July. Um, then we found out we needed US Army Corps of Engineers permit. Um, it just received that. Week, week ago, week and a half ago. So we were kind of. You know, kind of scrambling to get this work done, this done for a long time. And um. The uh, so. Contacted a contractor that we know does work in coastal environments, marine environments, and it is. It's reputable and just, it's good work and they've done work for the town as well. Uh, that's it. And um.
And they have to do it in October.
Yes, so the time, the time constraint that we're up against is the work has to get done by October thirty-first. Due to hibernating turtle that is in the area.
Ah.
And so we, it, it needs to be done during an active period before they go into hibernation. Cold season. So um, that way they, you know, if there aren't any turtles present, they can get out of harm's way while work is being done. Essentially, this is, this is to protect the environment, placing stone to, to um. Eliminate further erosion, damage that's occurring to the structure. So um, and you know, we contemplated doing this in-house, the work, you know, by public works, but it really requires equipment that's. Much bigger than we have. We realize that they have to reach across the channel with a large excavator to not go into the water. This arm thing. So it's bigger than we really could, could do. Um, I thought the price was actually pretty, pretty good. It was higher than I had in my, and I was thinking. It might be fifteen to twenty thousand. It's big equipment to mobilize and you know, big stone being placed. Relatively simple, but it's, it requires big work. You know, so um. That, just in the interest of time, I'd, I'd like to request this bid waiver so that we can keep going on.
I vote yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, so we'll do that. And then item number twelve um, is just awarding the contract to Southside Construction. I'm making a motion. Toward the contract to Southside Construction for riprap replacement on Green Hill Place in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and authorized for selecting sign up contracts and documents. Associated with this award funded through the, the twenty-five, twenty-sixth department operating account. So we have funding for this, so. And that's the, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. So good, we can move this on. I get this done by the end of October. Um, and then I had mentioned earlier that we're going to table number thirteen because the bids came back below the threshold that's required for the board to vote on this, right? Because you've got.
Yes, twenty, twenty-five thousand, one forty-six.
So that's on, it's fifty thousand, then that's the threshold, right?
Yes.
Okay, so um, so it came back, uh, I think it was like seventeen for some reason. Was that something else or?
Uh, it was something else, it was probably something else. This is, this, uh, we just received late Friday and this is another thing, you know, kind of up against the.
Yeah.
The, the cold weather for pavement markings.
So um, so we won't be voting on thirteen, he's, yeah, I can, we, he can just award that and he did do a bidding process for that.
The packet had a curb replacement schedule in it? Is that just something that's on the agenda or?
That was, I believe that was pulled as well.
That was pulled because of the size of the contract too, so I didn't want you to put that in. That's the one I was looking at. They had like really all over, I couldn't believe, yeah, yeah.
No, no, it's actually, it's eight, eight thousand was the luck, was, is the low, I think.
Yeah, but there was like a number for two hundred.
Seventy-one to nine hundred and seventy.
The two oh one, the two oh one is a decimal point problem. It's twenty-nine, that's what math.
Sixty-seven thousand.
That is, yeah, that was, um, contractor was here at the bid opening, he's, I, I, he just walked out, I think he.
I never understood the project, I guess.
Okay, okay, so anyways, that's.
That was an error. That, that was originally on the draft agenda that went out and then we pulled that because of the threshold, so. Okay, sorry about that. Um, great, well, thank you, John, for coming up for that. Thank you. Um, item number fourteen was, wanted to talk about, um, first of all, let me talk about the selectmen meeting schedule. I'm always having a conflict for the Tuesday mornings with CCM and I tried to work through it this last year. Um, but, because I have to go to the, that's the uh, you know, state organization and, you know, we do a lot with legislature and everything else. Um, so I was going to propose we move our Tuesday Zoom meeting to Wednesday.
Our regular select meeting?
Yeah, so starting at the beginning, January first, is there a problem if we moved it to Wednesday?
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday mornings don't work for you?
It's the, just happens, so it's another board meeting.
Okay.
And, and so this one was on Tuesday, that was on Wednesday.
Right, okay. Um, and then uh. Well, I, I, we need to, if you have a known conflict, I know I'm going to have a known conflict because they start. Uh, I've got their schedule now and it's, you know, sometimes things get shifted around, but it is becoming, I'm.
Do we have to do that?
We, no, it doesn't. I mean, we can uh, move it to all Zoom. We could do um, eh, you know, a five o'clock on Tuesday. Keep it on Tuesday and then do a five o'clock.
So we originally had the morning meetings as a concession to staff.
That's right, yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't for us, it wasn't for the public, it was a concession to staff that had to be here. Um. Who could talk to staff and see if. Uh, a, a five or a, or even another seven o'clock meeting or a six o'clock meeting or something like that.
If it's on Zoom, it could be more, you know, still Zoom advantage that way, but that's a good, that's a good point, Bruce, just to.
Yeah, it was, it was, because we tend to try to do more of the, you know, routine.
It was pretty frustrating for them to.
Yeah.
But we also, we also weren't doing the consent agenda aspect then either, which, so maybe, so maybe.
Well, what if we did like four o'clock or something? I just, and we all have so many, I, you know, with our evening meetings or just, you know. Um, and I feel like, um, you know, we have the, we try to keep all the major issues on the seven o'clock Monday night meeting for public. It doesn't always work that way, we try. Um, and I'm just trying to think if we could do something like four o'clock and then that way it kind of overlaps with business hours. It's also. You know, a little more accommodating. Does that work with you, something like that, or is four a problem?
Well, four interferes with the bus.
Oh, that's right.
What time are you done? I'm not, I mean, I'm. Five, i- if I'm, if I'm running, I could maybe make it for four, but it really, it would be, it would be like four thirty.
Um, so, or maybe we just do, I, I just would rather, because I know I have other committees that I have evening meetings. Nice having one that's either in the morning or, you know. Um, why don't we, I'll, I'll do a little more research because I also got to be careful of like other work committees meetings too, because we just kind of looked up mornings.
They can, they can.
Yeah, I mean, or we could do Thursday. I don't know, is there any? We could do eight AM. It is nice if any of them, you know.
I'm miserable.
He's, I think we used to do it at like seven or seven thirty.
Thirty, I think it was, yeah.
Yeah. When people start, but it's too early, yeah.
Well, it is hard if somebody's got kids, trying to get the kids out the door and.
Oh, I mean, listen, you, you made choices.
Well, there's Monday morning also, you know, I just thought, who wants an eight AM Monday? So.
Thursday school, yeah. What's the difference between Tuesday and Thursday?
Yeah, not, yeah.
I, I could work with that.
So I gotta check, because, and actually, um. All right, yeah, let me, let me think about it and I'll maybe just email right. Since we'll try to figure it out. I think the preference would be the eight AM, but if not, then we could do a four thirty. Sure, um, I think that would be a little better than doing another evening meeting, just because you don't want to be pumping into all these other committees that we have to go to, so. Okay, great. And then the budget, this is a draft of the budget referendum and I wanted to highlight that we're trying to get this into April. So this is like the. This is last year because of the new charter, we were able to move it up a week and now we're able to move it up one more week. So our budget referendum would be the end of April, which would be really nice. I know. Um, it compresses things a little bit, but not really. We had big stretches. You know, for all these workshops that we would have in the Board of Finance and I, and we always felt.
I felt like we were done and then it just kind of dragged on.
Yeah, it just dragged on. So this is a little more compressed. So take a look at it and see what your thoughts are. There was one typo on here. Um, on, or, we're selecting schedules, either Tuesday or it's just be Wednesday. Um. So this would actually mean, um, and we have to obviously talk to the Board of Finance about this, but I asked them to, like, let's pull it as early as possible because. Most towns have them, or like one of the, you know, uh, later towns. So. Um, so if everybody's amenable to that, I would run this by the Board of Finance to see if they think it works. Staff, look at this and, and it, and it basically does work. Uh, for everybody. Yeah.
Good.
Okay, um, all right, so I think that is it. I guess I can open up to citizens comments. I don't know if we, we have nobody left in the room. Everybody's left us here.
And no hands are raised online.
Yeah, just one more time. They have, we have a few people, but no hands. Okay, all right, with that, I guess, um, here are no objection. Meeting is adjourned. Great, thank you, thank you.